Actually, it's kind of a collection book. I think it works.
There's like, they got it. It's green in there, so it's very avant garde.
I think that's sometimes.
That's the whole thing. He's layering today. You're a lot richer.
I know. I mean, he was like.
Yeah, meatball. Yeah.
Now, if you got Mr. Pryor's hat.
I can't pull off that hat, sorry. Can't go anywhere without getting busted. I said, you can't go anywhere without getting busted.
I know. That's okay, I can give it back. I'll just refrain today. Because, because as they say, good or bad, it's, it's recognized, right? I tell my niece, she's thinking of running for politics. I was Georgian, I told her, it says, name, friend. I said, so get out there and do everything you can.
You can to get your name out there.
Yeah, you gotta get your name out there.
I laugh with my kids all the time how often I'm in the newspaper compared to them. I had a customer out in Dallas, Pennsylvania. And she said, at night, I'd be talking to my company, I'd say, oh, you know, Mark Sorban's helping me with this, Mark Sorban's helping me with that. She says, and one night, she's a, she's an eleven-year-old daughter, she says, and she's in the TV room, and I'm in the kitchen, and she hollers, she says, hey, Mom, now Mark Sorban's on TV. Because I never thought she was even here in the conversation. They picked her up. She says, you were on the news for something over in the town.
Yep. Unfortunately, mine's probably out in a negative sense.
Well, good or bad, publicity is publicity. Oh, you know, they say, oh, that's the guy I got in my face. It's kind of yelling me.
So, the shirt and the jacket.
Tight almost, more or less.
That might have been good.
What's Mr. Sorban wearing? No. Because we could swap them out, because I don't have a tie share.
You could just put.
I don't know, you stop there. I, you know, I had my blood flow, my thought process, and everything so much better. I didn't realize for years. Covid, Covid, Covid.
It's actually part of the pandemic.
For, for COVID. Just another, another. Part of the year. I've, I've never, never minded it. I used to hate Fridays. You do see it back on, when we switch to different. They're always wearing, like, just a report. Then the acronym changed every, you know, couple of years anyway, but like, BQs. ACQs, you know. And that would be like, what? The camouflage. Oh, okay. You'll. That'll be a thirty-second. I'm not gonna wait till one and five. They change their name. Plastic beads, where your dress, uniform, pants. Okay. With a stripe, stripe, and a white shirt.
On Fridays?
Yeah.
What the heck?
Little starch.
How you doing? Good, what's happening?
I'm just ready for the winter weather.
Me too. It's coming, yeah, don't.
I know, it's only gonna get colder.
Yeah.
Those nice shiny shoes are plastic.
Yeah, tomorrow's gonna be.
Is that how you keep them?
Because tomorrow's Saturday, you're gonna be green.
Because black is hard to, yeah, once you stuff it, it's.
See, now you learn all the secrets.
I have a shirt.
Well, you were wearing.
You could watch your dog.
My number three thousand nine.
And so everybody's like, you have a shirt.
Well, see, there was, I did something.
It is, it was very.
They have so many, unnecessary things in there. That keeps them, well, they're screaming, and then all the water runs down through.
How you doing, ma?
Okay. Where'd you go to vacation? I heard you went to Alaska.
Cancun.
I would eventually.
Since you can't cut your neck off.
Second contact.
He, he, he forgot his glasses. I said, I'll be the only one who can see.
I usually don't bring my glasses.
He looks like he belongs in some kind of show on TV.
Oh, thank you.
Jeopardy.
Jeopardy. Oh, I wish I was smart enough to be on Jeopardy. Everything's gonna be phrased in a form of question. What's the meaning of life? Why are we here? What is existential?
That sounds like a sci-fi special. It is.
Oh, she's smiling.
Says something new?
For now. Right, I don't usually work here until retired.
Morning.
Who do we have?
This is Beth.
Hi, Beth.
Morning.
Morning. Well, with the groundhog scene is shallow this morning, we'll praise for six more weeks of winter. We will. Did everybody start? Well, it's true. We'll ask everybody to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance before we convene our commissioner's meeting. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've granted us. May we take each moment with enthusiasm and strive to be positive in our minds and actions. We ask you for your wisdom to fall upon us this day. Give us clarity so that we are effective in our decisions. Point us always to positive outcomes in favor of our constituents. Let us give praise for those results. And Father, we remember this important day as an event took place on the eightieth anniversary of Four Chaplains Day. These four men of clergy died during World War II, rescuing civilian and military personnel as the American ship SS Dorchester sank. Six hundred and seventy-four of the nine hundred and four died at sea. Two hundred and thirty survived as the result of their rescue efforts. This morning, we remember those four chaplains of different faiths, who acted in heroic fashion, sacrificing their own lives for their men and women. They stayed calm, assisted frightened personnel, and gave up their own life jackets to others in the end. May we always honor those who have laid down their lives for others. Lord, we ask for your hand to be over our meeting this morning. In these things, we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to your public citizens, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Okay, at this time, we'll convene the commissioner's public meeting. We'll ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment on agenda items only at this time? You have any online? Okay, now for the audience. Okay, we'll move on.
Okay, reports. Caitlin, group counsel, payable cash performance.
Where are you, Caitlin?
Good morning, commissioners. Presented for ratification, our invoices due through February eighth to be paid on February second in the amount of one million, seven hundred, ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. The breakdown is as follows, with fourteen point three-two percent being funded by the general fund at two hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Twenty-one point twenty-eight percent is being funded by grants and other sources at three hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and three cents. Sixty-three point three-five percent is being funded by RMS at one million, one hundred thirty-five thousand, ninety-one dollars and forty-six cents. And one point zero-five percent is being funded by escrow at eighteen thousand, eight hundred, fifty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Okay, questions? A motion?
I'll move to approve.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried, thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to personnel actions. Jess.
Morning, Jess.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Director.
Good morning.
I'm seeking your approval on the following personnel actions. These are conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of background checks and other employment conditions. For JPO, Matt Yonkin, transferring into the chief of JPO full-time. The hourly pay rate is thirty-seven fifty-eight, although this is a exempt salary position. The transfer date is February fifth, twenty twenty-three. For the domestics office, a domestics relations investigator, whose name is redacted, is a part-time replacement at twenty-three sixty-six per hour. This individual will not exceed a thousand hours in a year, and they are anticipated to start on February the first. For DPS, Angela Ruiomi, a telecommunicator trainee position, a full-time replacement, eighteen seventy-two per hour, and we're anticipating her to start on February the sixth. Also for DPS, Jessica, Jessica Ivanka, Ivanka, a telecommunicator trainee position, full-time replacement, eighteen seventy-two per hour, anticipated to start on February sixth as well. For planning and development, we have hired Alexa Bixel as a natural resources planner, full-time replacement at twenty-two sixty-one per hour, and she's anticipated to start on February the sixth. For the prison, Michael Gomez, a CO-1 relief, full-time replacement at twenty dollars per hour, anticipated to start on February the twentieth. Also for the prison, Christopher Dagostino, a CO-1 relief position, full-time replacement at twenty dollars per hour, anticipated to start on February twentieth.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
Any questions?
No.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. This time, we'll recess, recess the commissioner's public meeting for the salary board, and we will convene the salary board this time.
I guess I will read that. Okay. For the conservation district, request to change a part-time position, the soil conservation special projects position from a pay grade nine to a pay grade eight. This would affect Mark Davidson. And then, for the Department of Public Safety, change the title of telecommunicator three to communication supervisor. And the pay grade for this was also adjusted back in December from an eight to a nine. This will affect Stephanie Andrus and Jacob Winner and anybody else that, that is in that telecommunicator three title.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Beery.
Could you explain that position though, for the conservation district, Mark Davidson?
Yeah, so, this is the soil conservation special projects. I think what it, it, I'm not sure whether it's referring to the Ag Board as, when I see the title, special projects. So there's an Ag Board that's totally separate from the conservation district. It happened to be that when Mark Davidson was here for thirty-four years, he did both jobs, but they are completely separate. That is the board, the Ag Board is the board that we set aside with money, local money and state money, land for ag preservation. And we typically commit about fifty thousand a year out of the budget. Mark knows the ins and outs of that program, which is why we kept him on. I don't know why the title is Soil Conservation Special Projects, except that what I'm thinking is that, oh, no, I know what it is, because we use that title when we, when we have to do it.
He's been in the, the special projects.
For.
Since he retired.
Since he retired, right. That's the title, that's what caught me off guard. That is the Ag Con, uh, Ag Con, the Ag easement.
And who's, who's paying for that position?
So it's a part-time position, and the Soil Conservation District is paying for it.
Do you know how many hours it's approximately?
I believe they're paying.
I think so, the last time.
Yeah, they are.
They were.
He, it's very minimal number of hours, I don't, I don't know.
It's the only way he has to do an easement, basically. That's how I get him off. Like, he's doing the appraisals, all that kind of stuff.
Very limited number of hours.
Yeah, very limited.
Yeah.
Very limited. But honestly, the, well, first of all, we, our job description for the conservation district director doesn't even include this, because it's a totally separate job. And he had the thirty-four years' knowledge to know how to do it much more efficiently than try to bring someone up.
Okay. Okay, that, this time, we'll adjourn the salary board, and we'll convene the commissioner's public meeting.
Moving on to TDA.
All right, for the conservation district, request to change the position we just discussed from a pay grade nine to a pay grade eight. This will affect Mark Davidson in the position. For Department of Public Safety, changing the telecommunicator three position to a, a different title, communication supervisor. Also, the pay grades are changing as well, which, that was approved back in December. Also, for the Department of Public Safety, change the title for Richard Whalen. He was accidentally hired as a telecommunicator one with experience title, that was the title. It was just an incre, it was, it was an administrative error, he should have been hired as a telecommunicator two. His pay was not impacted, it was just a title mix-up. And then for the coroner's office, we're reclassifying their position. We are re-titling the deputy coroner positions, all of them, to deputy coroner slash investigator. That would result in no pay change. And then, we are eliminating the admin portion of the one deputy coroner position, so that'll ch, transition just into a regular deputy coroner slash investigator. Those admin responsibilities will be incorporated into the new chief of the coroner's office.
Yeah, the only, the only question I had was, with the public safety, change of Richard Whalen, because there was no pay change, and I recall us doing a three-tier increasing in pay, is that because he worked on?
Nope, he, he got, his pay was correct in the system. It was just an administrative clerical error that the title was wrong, but he got the correct pay. And his position was even reclassified with our compensation analysis. He got that appropriately and correctly, it was simply just a title issue that we needed to correct.
Okay. We have Beth online. Beth, do you have any comments?
Nope, she, she's absolutely correct. Said on the TDA that it was incorrect whenever we were looking at all the spreadsheets, that he was just listed wrong, but his pay was correct the entire time he's been back there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Who just joined the call?
Good morning, commissioners, Jason works.
Okay, good morning, Jason. Can I have a motion for the TDA actions?
I'll move to approve. A second.
All fair side? Aye. Aye. So carried, thank you.
Okay, moving on to information items, Maya.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Matt. We are requesting bids for the purchase of some great flags for the Veterans Affairs Office. Historically, we always do cooperative agreements where we can piggyback off each other for pricing and all get together for multiple counties, but this year, we are actually going to be purchasing, we only think this will be the only year that we would have to do that, and, but, we're going to put that out to bid, and we'll have delivery later on April first, so.
Okay. I can emphasize the, the importance of this, placing flags on our veterans' graves. I actually take part in this every year. It's very moving, it's a great way to teach our youth to respect our military, our past military who's passed on, and thank you for doing this very much. Mike, you want to make any statements?
I, I'm just, uh.
I do know the families appreciate this so much.
Well, it's, uh, we're required to do this by state law, but it's, it's an honor for our office to really participate in this. This became necessary this year. Last year, we had some supply issue, supply chain issues. Some of the suppliers, one supplier said they weren't gonna produce flags at all last year. So, we, prices went up, supply chain issues. This year, we wanted to preempt that by getting a two-year supply of flags, kind of lock in a price, and as Maya said, this is just a one-year thing, and it necessitated by not having a cooperative, and everybody's kind of doing it on their own this year, going out for different prices. And by doing a two-year supply, it put us over the threshold for bids and so forth. So, we're asking the commissioners to approve this going out for, for the folks who do this.
Mike, how many veterans do we place the graves at?
Approximately twenty thousand. And we couldn't do it, just our office, and as you know, we got Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and veteran organizations, and just individuals that come out and say, hey, do you need a cemetery that needs adopting? And we, we accommodate that, gladly.
Were you able to get the flags made in the United States?
Always. That's one of the.
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
It has to be American, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Have a motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is just informational.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I withdraw my motion.
Could be a motion to hear.
Yeah. Now we're the information, the reactions.
Maya, seven point one.
The first item I have for you is vote to approve the 2020 Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program Agreement. This is for an agreement that will run from April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and will conclude on May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. This is specific to the Nature-Based Strategies and Development Solutions application that we did earlier. Total project for that is twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
All fair side? Aye. Aye. So carried.
And then my last item for you is vote to approve the private Title IV D Attorney Agreement with Patricia Shipman Esquire. This is a requirement by Department of Human Services, that they require that domestic relations provide legal services to assist in the establishment and enforcement of support services, so.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point four, Jason. And five.
Yes, morning, commissioners, seven point four, vote to approve award bid for R&amp;L Development. That's our site utility project that we were up to bid. This is in the amount of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This is part of our closure projects that we've been moving forward with the last couple of years. It is right in line with the engineer's construction price that we were estimating. We did get three bids for this, and R&amp;L has been doing some fantastic work for us already, so they're on site doing good work as we speak.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Thank you, commissioners. Next, seven point five is the award for the data system. We went out to bid, we have one bid for March Technologies. There is not that many companies out there that does this type of work. This will, this will install all types of software that we need to monitor pumps and control systems throughout the landfill. This will, this is what they use throughout the sewer facilities and water treatment plants, the data systems. So we went out to bid, and the price was seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. That too was, I was actually six percent under with the engineer's estimate for bid of the project, and this too will be coming out of closure funds, part of the projects we have for getting the landfill ready.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
Questioner coming?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, Jase.
Oh, you're coming on, yeah.
Yeah. You know, you mentioned about how the engineer did an estimate, and it always seems strange, we get these estimates from engineers, and then we put it out to bid, and does, I mean, if it asks this commissioner, does, do the people doing the bid say, well, here's what the engineer estimates? I mean, I'm sort of curious to sort of understand, or is that, is that engineering information? Probably internal. Internal?
Yes, that is internal. I typically will receive an estimate from engineering firms within a week of when the bids are due and to be opened.
Oh, I see.
That is internal, that is a document that we keep ourselves, so that most you're gonna see estimates across the, if you do dirt work or piping, you know, typically, you're gonna be looking at the, the price of HD piping or line or all that, right before we get the bid, because it is up to the week of the bid is when those companies are looking at pricing, and it changes so often. So yes, sir, it's an internal document that we do not share with anyone until we open up the bids.
Great. I wonder if we do that all across in planning and everything? Because sometimes I, you know, like the bridge and so forth, we hear of, not just with the county, with a lot of public entities, the estimate is this. So, all right, thanks for that clarification, Jason.
You know, Jason, in the private sector, when, when we're looking for pricing for a major project, we'll call our suppliers, and they'll protect our, our price. Is it similar for your company? Where if I call, let's just say I'm using a distributor, and I call them up and say, hey, I, I want this product, I'm, then he'll protect my pricing, okay, by giving me the lowest price if anybody else calls in, as a competitor? Does it work that way in, in this industry?
Sir, maybe in the past it has. I will say this, in the last two years, when we call for pricing of any source supplies, it's, well, here's the quote we're gonna give you, and it's good for twenty-four hours, two weeks, one week. It used to be a quote would be good for thirty, sixty days. You don't find that in trucking industry, you don't find it in the HD liner or piping industry. Controls and stuff, same way, and half the time, it's, well, we don't know when we can even get it in for you. So unfortunately, maybe, it used to work that way, but it has been a rough, rough couple of years for any kind of major projects for pricing.
Yeah, if we, we spec a product, and that's how they, that's how they protect us, so. All right.
Okay, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Yeah, can we go back to seven point three?
Thank you. Beth?
Good morning again.
Good morning.
An amendment to my Penn Corps agreement, they are the, they'll be doing surveying, engineering, consulting services, and all the zoning requirements for the tower build on the Jersey Shore Water Property in Porter Township. It is a budgeted item estimated at fourteen thousand dollars for the tower site location.
And it is a 2023 budget item?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
What should I cover?
Okay, I have a comment. I have voiced my opposition of filing an appeal, following the decision handed down by Judge Lee on the lawsuit between the Lycan County Commissioners and Lycan County Controller. I fully appreciate and respect my colleague's position, that it is an issue of principle, and one that is grounded by the interpretation of law, of which no. and one that is grounded by the interpretation of law, of which no precedent exists, and I fully respect my colleague's position. Half the counties in the state are organized as to where the controller oversees the functions in question, and the other half the counties where the commissioners oversee these same functions. The statute in question here is not exactly in its identification as to which counties are organized correctly and which ones are not. My original concern with this case and the difference of interpretation of the statute between commissioners and controller was due to the Lycomy County Controller's threat to remove her signature from the county's checks, which would have put payroll for our employees and payments to our vendors and constituents in jeopardy. The judge made it clear that the controller would have had to follow through with her threat of removing her signature before a legal remedy could be available. I have concluded after Judge Lee's original decision that is no longer prudent to continue this conflict and any appeal actions moving forward. Our residents witness constantly conflict daily in Harrisburg and Washington. My opinion is this behavior does not need to continue in our county. I have discussed my position with my two colleagues in efforts to seek a common sense approach to this issue. We have met with the controller to work towards, together, towards a common sense approach towards a resolution. If these functions are organized, this is designated by a way of a letter of agreement, then the Commissioner's Office, the Controller, and the Office of Budget and Finance can work in unity to achieve our organizational goals. To continue this fight in court only allows more conflict to continue, which is unnecessary and costly. It is my position that an appeal to Commonwealth Court is an additional and substantial expense that I feel is not warranted. I would ask my colleagues to join me to developing an amenable solution that places these departments work in unity for the citizens of Lycomy County. Thank you.
Well, I want to try to clarify something for the public. This isn't a, in the reference that this is a question of principle, this isn't a fight over its principle, it's a question of interpretation of law. The Controller's office in this county for 15 years ran with the commissioners doing accounts payable, accounts receivable, and the general ledger. And it baffles my imagination and my mind to think that if the controller in the county did her job for 15 years, how in year 16 or 17 she could decide that she can't do her job? Either she hasn't been doing her job for 15 years, or in fact, she can do her job. It isn't a, because I want the public to understand, it isn't a question of principle that we're trying to say, well, it has to be this way. We need an interpretation of law, and that's what courts do. Courts interpret statutes, and appeals courts interpret statutes and law. Trial courts, which is what the decision we had from the trial court, here's the facts. Um, and in fact, based on the facts regarding the threat, or to withdraw her name, determined that there was no threat because it hadn't happened, or there was no harm, I should say. So, if, for me, and I have, I don't think we have a quote fight going on. This is not, when we say that there's differences in Harrisburg or Washington, this isn't about some, uh, situation where we don't talk to each other. Uh, in fact, we had a meeting with the, uh, Controller last week to try to see if we could reach some agreement, and basically, her position was that we just have to implement the entire ruling that Judge Lee put out. Now, the problem with that is that the statute refers to the general ledger, but the statute doesn't refer to the other issues at all. So in essence, we would be changing the way we've done things, and my concern is that the fox, in this case, the Controller's job is to oversee what we do. And there was an instance several years ago where the courts wanted to pay for some pants and commissioners wanted to pay for some pants, and the Controller told us, you can't do it because there's no policy for an employee who tore the, tore their pants pursuing a criminal. That's her job. I find it difficult to understand how she could run the general ledger, pay the bills, do the payroll, and also oversee whether that's being done in compliance with the law? Because you would have the person doing it also overseeing themselves. And that's why I think it wasn't that way for decades and decades and decades in this county. If an appellate court tells us, well, that's the way it is, then I respect the law, but I can't see, after we've come this far in trying to understand what the statute says, which by the way, is not clearly written and obviously is interpreted in different ways in different parts of the state, I would think that we would be doing a disservice to our constituents to not have a final determination by, by an appeals court on the issue. And that's why I have been in favor of, uh, appealing it. The amount of money that it'll, that we'll spend in the appellate realm is far, far less than what's been spent, and quite frankly, both parties have spent money, and so at this point, to not get a court decision almost seems as though we are just throwing away the money we already spent because we're not going to go. By the way, absent an appellate decision, a future Board of Commissioners could say, we don't think it should be done this way, we think it should be done the way it was done, and could sue to have it done. Or a future controller could, could say that she wants it done. So I think that it's in the interest of our constituents to get a decision. I hold no ill will towards the Controller. I respect and applaud that she's there because that's the, the way the system was set up so that we have checks and balances. Uh, but I'm, I'm not, I don't think it's a good idea at this point for us not to get a decision from the appellate court. And I don't, whether we get a decision that says that we have those responsibilities or not, we still need a Director of Budget and Finance because we need someone in the Budget and Finance Office who is looking at what we spend and finding ways to reduce and be more efficient and work with the department heads in a way that we haven't really been able to in the past. Work with department heads as though they are, uh, subunits of a larger company. Work with those department heads to really go over their spending, look at their plans, and how can we try to integrate the financial part of it with what we're required with our mission? So I respect your, your view on, and I have no problem. I mean, everyone's entitled to their opinion, but me personally, uh, I believe that it's really in the interest of the constituents to know. If she had been doing it this way for 20 years and we were trying to change it, then I would say, well, wait, we're off base. But because it had been done a certain way, and quite frankly, we changed it under threat of a lawsuit. And I was trying to be conciliatory at the time, and I said, well, we don't want you to sue us, but there was no question, and you don't have to believe me on this, there was lawyers, our lawyers were there, other commissioners, on the telephone, her lawyer from Pittsburgh said he was going to sue us if we didn't turn all these functions over to her. He alleged that there was massive changes, I shouldn't say massive, there were significant changes in the county code. That is not the case. After going through this process and examining it, there were not significant changes in the code. So I, I think that it's in our interest. And I, I can't swear, but I would say that the, uh, the cost on appeal is going to be significantly less. I would defer to our solicitor if he has any opinion on that.
Generally speaking, an appeal is on a court record. It's a briefing and argument schedule. It's a different cost factor than the case below and the trial court. That's correct.
Right. I mean, the case below, we had to establish facts, we had to do affidavits, we had to have prepared testimony and so forth. There's none of that. There's no witnesses that are going to testify. There's a statute that the legislature wrote, and there's case law, and they, the court needs to interpret it. And actually, from what we can tell, it's an unpr- a case of first impression, right? Meaning that there hasn't been an interpretation of that statute.
Commissioner, I wasn't here when, when that happened. It was in 2018 or 19.
Yeah.
So the Board of Commissioners at that time decided to give it back to her under threat of a lawsuit, is what you're saying?
Yeah. She, she met with us, and interestingly enough, when you became involved, it was under the threat of withdrawing the signature, but it was under the threat of a lawsuit.
Okay.
But again, I hold, you know, and I hold no ill will, and I think that we all are working together fine. I mean, we, we had a courtship meeting last...
I just wanted to clear up because I wasn't hearing.
No, no, I understand.
I heard you say that, I just wanted...
Yeah. Well, if I'm, if you think I'm incorrect, Commissioner Sayer, tell me.
No, no, no. I just don't know if we should, you know, be talking about certain things that happen, you know?
Well, I mean, I'm not saying it to, to throw daggers, I'm saying that it's a fact that that's why we did it, and, and, and we were trying to be conciliatory, but it doesn't, it doesn't make sense because we can't, we have to be able to get access to financial information unfettered. And I'm not suggesting, it doesn't have to do with an individual, that's the point. It doesn't have to do with Tony, Rick, and Scott, or Krista. It has to do with an office, two elected offices, and what, that's what, that's what I was trying to say.
Well, I, I, I'm torn now, um, because I'm, I'm just looking at it and saying, what, what do we, how does it change one way or the other regardless of who wins the appeal or not? We, we, we need to provide a service that, that is fluent, that's transitional between, uh, newly elected officials, whether they're the commissioners or the controller, right? And, uh, they need to be done probably in, in the same method regardless of who has the control over it. So I would say, let's, let's work to that end goal and, and see where we can negotiate and come to, to, you know, mutual agreements, and then decide whether we're going to move on or not with the appeal. I want to hear it from both sides, and, um, I think we're going to start, because it's just not about that, there are other things, such as a Director of Budget and Finance. Do, do we need a hundred thousand dollar paid position if it gets moved? I don't know. So, uh, we'll just, you know, we'll just continue down this path until we try to come up with an agreement if we can.
So, and again, just to be clear, our job is to watch over the taxpayers' money, and our job is to be sure that we have access to unfettered, unfiltered information about where taxpayers' money is going, and it's our job to make decisions about that. I'll give you an example. If, uh, we control accounts payable and a contract has not been fulfilled, in our opinion, we can order to withhold payment on the contract. There may be legal consequences to doing that, but if we think a contractor has grossly abused his position and abused the taxpayers' money, we can withhold. If we don't do a, if we don't do accounts payable, we lose the ability to control that. And it then is in the hands of another elected official, but we're the ones responsible because we're responsible for the budget and the taxpayers' money. So that's, that's why, that's an example on that side. I think there are other examples. Uh, in the general ledger, making sure that, uh, we're knowledgeable and aware of the various parts of that ledger and that we don't have, whether it's bond payments or other categories and accounts set up in the general ledger that we don't have any control over. So for example, if we control the general ledger and somebody sets up a dummy invoice to a, a dummy account to siphon money out of the county, the controller's job is to oversee it and investigate it. If they're also controlling the general ledger and someone in that office sets up, our job isn't to investigate, our job is to control finances. So I think it's important to understand that. And if any constituents have a question about it, feel free to call me. I'd be happy to discuss it with them in more detail.
I've made my statement, I respect you, your statements, just, uh, we're approximately a hundred thousand dollars into this, and, and I do not want to spend another dime on something that half the state does it one way, better half the state does it the other way. We both have access to it, we both can see things, nothing's being hid, we have to work together, and, and that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah. Well, see, unfortunately, that's where sort of this argument started because there was access that was not granted, and there was access that was denied. So, um, I, I don't see, um, building a house, spending a hundred thousand dollars doing it, and then you're down to spending the last 15 or 10 or 15, and, and, uh, you don't do what you need to do to fix the foundation, so...
Thanks for that.
I don't, I have not, by the way, I have not gotten any constituents calling me saying, why are you engaged in this situation with the controller? Zero, none. I have had constituents say to me, one of the commissioners going to finally get a place for the coroner. I've had lots of constituents tell me that. Why don't you lease a building for the coroner? Why is it that he cannot, uh, put his trucks in a place? That has been a pressing demand of constituents, but I've not heard anybody tell me, Commissioner Maravito, you're, you're not pursuing a correct path in the situ- with the situation with the controller.
And I agree with your comments about the coroner, and I'm ready to move out on it. I've already stayed...
Well, the problem is, we had a building and we let it go from us, and now it's probably going to go somewhere else. We had a building that we could have put him in and done a lease like we have for a short, you know, for X amount of time and, and made a payment.
Commissioner, I sat here six weeks ago, and you asked me to be open-minded.
Yeah.
And I was, and I didn't hear another word back till the end of the year, and I came into your office, and I said, have you got ahold of Mr. Lundie? And you said you'd reach out to him, and I asked you again at the end of the year...
Yeah.
And nothing happened.
It's not that, it's not at the end of the year, it was six months ago. It was a year ago. It's, we've been in negotiations with Lundie a long time. My two colleagues made it clear that they were not interested in going to the Lundie Building. One of them referred to it as an animal that's in a barnyard. Uh, so it's crystal clear. I mean, yeah, it, there's no question, you came in to me in December and I told you that I hadn't heard from him, but at that point, I'm not sure whether Mr. Lundie was, was fed up with us or what, but, uh, in any event, I'm just saying that I've not had constituents tell me about the controller, but they have said to me that we should be doing something with the coroner.
I totally agree, and I worked on it for three years, you've worked on it for seven, and I'm ready to move out on, on some property and build one. And I just need one of you two to agree, and then we can do so.
Well, I don't think it's fair to frame it as you need one of us two to agree.
I would, I would prefer both of you.
That is not, what we need is, we need a place that the coroner is comfortable with and approves. It makes no sense for us to try to ram something down the coroner's throat because...
We can build it from scratch, we can build it from scratch, Commissioner.
I know. But it has to be a location that he thinks works for his office. I mean, it's a little presumptuous of us to tell the coroner how to do his job and where to do it. Part of what gets us in trouble in this county is when we, I should say in life, is when we sometimes try to tell folks to do too much, so...
The real commissioners of Lycomy County.
I'm losing my voice.
Public comment this time?
What? I have, I'm on...
Yes.
Um, two from Thomas Adams. I think the controller is wrong and she should stop wasting our money. I also think the judge is wrong and is taking the law out of its contextual construct.
Any other comments? Okay, anybody else from the public? Okay, hearing none, we have completed our agenda, and our next meeting will be on February the 9th, 2023.
And our next meeting will be on February the 9th, 2023 at 10:00 AM. Thank you for joining us. Have a great week.